That wasn't earlier.
And on call to order, our special city council workshop meeting of February 18th. Our second item on the agenda is discussion and possible action concerning your request from the Guthrie Public Library Board and Friends of the Guthrie Public Library. We have lots of friends here in the room as well as staff to support exploring the creation of a Logan County library system. Leroy, you want to start or?
I'll just briefly start.
Okay.
One, this is not a request or proposal from the city administration. It's from the library board, is your advisory on the library and Friends of the library. We tried to, between me and Suzette, put the appropriate background in your packet, the state constitution provision on county libraries and the appropriate state statutes so that you can have those as reference. And now I think it would be appropriate to either have the chairman of the library board, Suzette, introduce the library board members here at Friends of the Library and then tell us how they're going to organize their presentation.
Okay. Who wants to take the lead? Suzette, you want to take the lead?
Sure. Thank you very much for your time. I would like to introduce Kate. She is the chair of our library board.
Okay.
Hello, hello.
Do we clap or?
No, no.
Didn't know how you did it on your board.
To her right, to my left, is Calvin, who is part of the Friends of the Library. To my left is Jamie, who is a board member. To my right is Lois, who is another board member. Behind you are library board, excuse me, library staff members. So Becca, Lord.
Candy.
Candy. I'm sorry, say your name again.
I'm Vicky from ODL.
Vicky from Oklahoma Department of Libraries.
Adrian Butler.
Oklahoma Department of Libraries. Chris Coute, library staff member. Say your name again.
Wendy Gabrielson, Oklahoma Department of Libraries.
Yes, and this is Melody Kellogg, who is our state librarian, Oklahoma Department of Libraries. And then I'll come back around and this is Gary, to my left, who is a board member, and I will turn it over to Kate.
Okay. Can you hear me if I just say seated? Is that okay with everybody? Would you like me to stand?
I think that works, Kate.
Okay. First of all, I am a librarian. I have been a librarian since 1970, which is probably hard to believe. I've worked in libraries my whole life. I've worked in public libraries and recently retired from Langston University as an academic librarian. So I'm pretty familiar with library service across the board. I'm not a professional, but I am. In case you don't know, the Guthrie Library lends books and books on CD. They also have a collection of digital resources such as if you want to read a bestseller and you like reading on your iPad, you could borrow a book. It's a free service and there's a whole range of materials available. How to Do It, nonfiction, fiction for adults, for children. There are a lot of resources at the library that you can't maybe see if you look at the building or if you look at their webpage, but they serve the community in many, many ways. Another way is we have computers, up-to-date working computers that don't die as soon as you log in. You must be a library patron or a customer to use them. You put in your library card number and you can use the internet for job search, for self-improvement, whatever it is you need the computer for. If you want to watch porn, we don't allow that, but everything else is pretty much fair game. We feel very, very strongly that we're doing a good job in the city of Guthrie. The people who use the library, which is not everyone, are very satisfied. The library's statistics have been increasing. As a matter of fact, across the board, library uses going up. There was a poll by the Gallup organization this past December and it turns out the results of the poll said more people went to the library in the polling time period than went to the movies. There's reasons for that. The library has current movies to borrow. The library has all kinds of resources for your kids. They have programs, they have... And we feel strongly that all these services should be made available to as many people as possible. We're focused on Logan County, obviously, but librarians across the state and across the nation are trying to reach out and offer those services. We do not actually, at this point, envision a big library in each little tiny community in Logan County. We don't think that that would be appropriate. However, there's a range of services that could be offered, from a van that brings books that people want to read and runs around the county. There could be a storefront. There's a lot of possibilities. So we're right now just reaching out first to you guys because, and Miss Cheryl, because we need, we need your approval behind us. But what we have to do now is we have to go to the people in each Logan County community and talk to them and see if they would be interested in this. So we're really at the very, very beginning stages of what we would like to do. We're talking probably years of development with, with talking to people and a vote would have to be held, a county vote for funds from the whole county. So we're not asking this library, this council to commit themselves to, you know, anything at this moment other than the support and goodwill of the process. We have the support of the state library over here, as you can see, they're all here to help. The Friends of the Library were in agreement. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say. And at this point, if you have questions, please feel free. You can ask me, Suzette, any of the board members.
So Kate, let me just start out. You said that the, that the usage is, is going up. Can you give us some numbers, say, over the last two or three years?
I had them, but I don't have them with me. You have some, Suzette?
On average, the Guthrie Public Library serves approximately five to six thousand people per month.
Is that the same five or six people every month?
Sometimes. During summer reading, it's pretty consistent.
Okay. And how do you keep your statistics? Do you keep them by?
We document it.
Tell me how you keep your statistics.
We document daily, weekly, monthly, and then we collect that data and compile it.
Okay, but people don't sign in, so you're just taking a head count?
Yes.
As they walk through the door?
Yes.
And do you, do you know if, how many are using computers? How many are using your written product? What?
Yes, we do have data to support how many circulations we have per month based on age. We don't have it based on geographic area yet. And we also can tell you how many people are using our public computers.
Okay, okay. I mean, you know, I, I call our library a library on steroids because all the things that you do outside of the normal, what my father would have classified library as, you're clearly not in that vein, so you do a lot of extra things. I don't know about the other, are there other libraries in the county?
Yes, there's Crescent Library, however, and ODL can definitely speak to this, they are not as sustainable as we are. Is that a reasonable statement?
Why is that?
That's something you would have to communicate with them about because that's another town.
If you put in this new library, will it be?
It's not a new library we're talking about.
Well, I know, I know. But I would say, would they be able to come over here or are they going to go online? Would the one in Crescent go away or would it stay? Would it be part of Guthrie's library or?
And I'm purposely looking at Mel to confirm that I am saying this correctly. That would be at the discretion of the, the board that is determined. So let's say, you all say it's okay for the Friends and the board and ODL and the library to explore what this would look like. Once we complete the exploration, we get all that information, we come back to you and we say, this is what we have. And you all say, okay, move forward. Then we move forward, then we would make contact with the commissioners, then we would make contact. And let's say all this is done and we then have a, and we're calling it a Logan County Library because we don't know what else to call it right now. It could be called ABC, we don't know. Then commissioners or directors, board members would be selected and based on their decision would determine if it would have a mobile unit, if there would be multiple locations in Logan County. Am I saying this correctly, Mel?
You are. Vicky, you want to address this because Vicky's had more experience working with the establishment of library systems, anywhere, in Oklahoma. Most of the systems we have, all of the communities within that county that choose to have a library are part of that library system. So it is an, an independent entity, if that makes sense. It's not a county government and it's not a municipal government. It is an independent entity. But then they typically partner with the municipalities. So I know in most cases, the cities own the building still and then the system, the library system, in this case, the Logan County Library System, would offer the library services, the operations out of that building. Likewise with Crescent, if they decided that they wanted to be a part of the system, then they would continue to own the building and, and the system would offer the library services.
The largest city is usually where the headquarters is. So Guthrie would be the headquarters for the Logan County.
So Guthrie would no longer fund the library, is what I'm hearing, right?
Your funding is by ad valorem tax.
But don't we already give that ad valorem tax to the EMS?
Different tax.
It's a different tax? So you can add another tax at will like that?
This would be another vote. It would have to be voted by everybody in the county.
I might clarify, in my reading on this, I don't know that it'd be practical, why anybody would do it, but it would not be the new library board that would decide. It would be each city government would make a decision. We could still have a Guthrie library that's not part of the county system. I don't know why we'd want to do that, but that would still be the city's authority to do that. Now that you, I don't know why we'd make that decision, but it's not the library, the new library board, and it, it will be a special unit of government, very similar to the EMS district where there is a board appointed and there's a process and a statute for that. And so that library board would be similar to the city council. That would be the governing body of the county library system. And then the librarian would kind of be like the city manager. That librarian would be the one that run the library, hired, fired staff in answer to the library board. So from the operations standpoint, we would be out of it. Then we could make a choice. We could either give or lease our building to the county system or, and we could still put funds in if we wanted to. You know, if you pass a big enough mill, I don't know why we would supplement it with city sales tax, but you, you could if you, if you chose to do so.
So their libraries are funded this way or done by the county?
Metropolitan. We have eight systems in the state.
That's what I was going to ask the Republicans like that, Mel.
Oh, yes. I just might add, Leroy, to what you said, and that is that you would still have some input because you would also, the city council would, would name the board member who would represent the city of Guthrie.
Yes, but no direct.
But no direct.
Other than naming one.
Correct.
So the way it gets created, in my reading of this, and we would be, at this time, a single, you know, the library because, because it's one system. It's not multiple counties. And those are the rules I look at. It would take an election. The county commissioners could decide themselves to call an election. Or if the voters, just like we're a petition state, you could have initiative petition signed by so many voters from the last election, I think it's 10%, if I remember right, or some percentage.
That would be 1,594 people.
There you go. Could sign a petition and then the county commissioners would have to call a vote because of the initiative petition. If it's passed, then it would be voted in to either be a, a single county library like ours would be one mill to four mills. And that would be decided as part of the election, whether it's going to operate off of one mill, two mills, three mills, four mills, or some combination there. Suzette did some calculations and came up with 1.1 million, somewhere in that, for four mills. So if, if each mill, if you divide that by four, you know, roughly almost 300,000 per mill if you did one mill or two. Right now, I think we put about 280, $290,000 of city funds, sales tax into the library in a combination of our money, grant from the library and other things. So our library runs on about $300,000, if I remember correctly.
Very good.
So there's seven in the, seven?
Are there eight systems?
Where are the other rural systems, not the metropolitan?
Well, there's Southern, Altus has a system, Southern Prairie. Western Plains has a system. Southern Prairie has two counties. Western Plains has four.
Those are the cities. What's the largest city in where you're talking? Where's Western Plains?
Clinton. And Altus is Southern Prairie.
How many counties are in Southeastern? Mayor?
Southeastern? They have like seven. We've got a map if you'd like to see it.
See it.
And we've got a map of the millages. There's only one, there are only a few that have two mills. Most are at four mills. Oklahoma City and Tulsa can be 5.2. And where I am in click Pioneer is at six mills. And it's a three county. That's the millage and then these are the systems.
And the mills are limited by the constitution. So if you were to change that, it would be quite burdensome to do that. But the ones that are over four mills are different classifications of libraries.
Exactly. You have to be a certain size to be over four. The smaller, you would be the four.
How long have these library systems been in place in metropolitan?
Oh gosh, that's a good question. I can say for Pioneer, it's been since 1960. And I think Pioneer was one of the first ones, probably Pioneer and Metro.
Metro is over 50. It's 65.
Right. Was it 65? I think they were the first two. And Pioneer started out with two counties and we added Potawatomi in 1975. I helped work on that one.
None of these have went to this format within the last 20 years? So all of these are at least 20 years old?
Oh, yes.
Over.
More than that.
More than that. And if you're going for a millage, you don't want to go for the one, you want to go for the four. Because one mill isn't going to really give you enough money. You're, you're very educated. I'm, you're really.
You said you need the city manager. You better be, you need the city manager.
I didn't realize that, I wasn't giving.
You know, and, and libraries provide a great service. They, the types of services have migrated over time to serve the various needs because the needs of the population they serve have changed over time. I think our library's been responsive to that and geared their programs to the audience that they serve. But then you also have to look at it from a flip side and, and just one note of interest, I, I found it interesting, we have EMS districts in our county for ambulance service and the state constitution limits EMS districts to three mills. And libraries in our county would be four mills. I found that was very interesting that whoever wrote the constitution provisions felt that there was more need for funding for libraries than EMS.
Well, but they all started a long time ago.
Well, that was before the internet and everything else, too.
But, but the thing that I think we need to be careful about as we discuss that, we've been working very hard to get a public safety district through the legislation where we could create a citywide public safety district to provide more funding for policing park. And if that has passed the House and it's at the Senate side now, looks like it will pass. If it passes, it will be going to the voters to do a five-mill property tax. Now that one will just be inside the city limits because that's all our authority, whereas the library board tax would be countywide, all property in the county. But if you pursue four mills, and, and I've been through many elections where you try to increase the millage, it's not an easy chore to do. And then you come back either before or after that and try to pass five-mill public safety district property tax, then you're asking the voters all of a sudden to go nine additional mills on their property tax. And is that, how realistic is that going to be? And is one of them going to kill the other or will they end up killing each other? Those are some strategic things that the council has to think about as they weigh this. Unfortunately, you would think they would be independent of each other and people would decide on their merits, but when you start talking about raising people's property tax, it becomes a sensitive issue pretty quick.
So the, the process, Kate, that you're talking about is to take this same information, if you will, to the other communities at this point involved?
Yes.
Which would be Langston, Crescent and Marshall, I guess, right?
We've been talking to some people in Mahal. We've been talking to Coyle. Again, it's all very preliminary. We haven't approached any of the governments in any of the, of the places. But yeah, we would, we would have to involve all the communities in order for this to really be functional. I mean, some communities might opt out. They might think, for whatever reason, it wasn't a good idea, but the, the process could go on with it even if someone decided they didn't want to opt in. But we'd like everybody to be in.
So for, go ahead, Cheryl.
No, if you, go ahead.
The, so for Guthrie citizens, what would be the, what are, what are the benefits of something like this? What, what, what's the added service, if you will, that would come with a library system versus the library on steroids that we have now?
Well, it's a little hard for me to speculate. If there's more funding, there's more staff, there's more materials. I mean, that's obvious. So you do have to spread more of those things around, but I would imagine that it would improve the Guthrie library just with input of, of funding and new, new eyes and new ideas. As far as any kind of specific, you know, they, they can check out, I think it's 10 books or 12 books now, whatever it is, that probably would change. So I don't know that there's a specific issue that would improve the Guthrie community's access. I can't, unless somebody else has an idea.
Along those, along those same lines, I will have to play the devil's advocate because we could, as council people, are constantly approached by people that disagree or have a negative attitude or approach to what we're trying to do. What's the advantage to those that don't currently use the library and those that are in the rural area that go to their cities anyway? Because we will be asked, why do this?
Hmm, why do this?
Coupled with that Guthrie has a premium library that they're already using for free.
Right. But no, they're not using it for free.
Well, they're not using it free, we pay for it.
Well, no, they have to pay.
Right, but we as a city pay for it as well.
Right.
What do they pay?
So, what is it, 10 or 12?
For out of county?
Yes.
No, for in, like in Guthrie.
If you live in Guthrie, what does it cost?
It's free.
That's what I'm saying. So it is free to the Guthrie citizens, so why would they want to?
And the rural residents as well.
But why would they want to pay? I'm just tagging on to Cheryl.
So geographically, Logan County is fairly wide. And I will ask some of the staff if they're comfortable to speak to this. Many of the, so we serve all of Logan County, that's 46,000 people. Many of our customers are driving a minimum of 30 minutes, if not longer, to get to the library because we're basically it. Some of them have created the library as a, we come to the library once a month for a visit because that's how much we can afford in gas to get to the library. Where if a library was closer to them, it would make it more accessible.
Well, I can speak to what we did in Norman. We added services, like we had, we could increase our preschool storytimes, we could increase our hours. Instead of being open up one night a week, we were open four nights a week. We offered services to people that couldn't come into the library. So we had strategically decided what we were going to do when we went to the election. And so those are the things that you would determine. And to speak to you, some of the things that we did, we tried to outreach out to those people that couldn't make it into the library. At one point, we had mail books. So if you couldn't come to the library, we now had the money to pay for the postage. We had the money to buy those resources, to get those materials to people. We started some outreach to some of the homeless areas and took books out. So we had determined what we were going to do when we passed the millage and what services we were going to expand that we currently could not pay for because we didn't have the resources.
Thank you. And I wasn't specifically, I'm not against library facilities and improvements and things, so don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm trying to put myself in the position of those that are going to come to us and say, what are we doing?
We had awful time passing six mills in Pioneer. And the same thing you're saying, because we have a lot of millages. And it didn't pass the first time, I'll be quite honest. And what Mary Sherman did, the director, she was very strategic. She said, if it doesn't pass, these are the services we're going to cut. And it didn't pass, she cut those services.
When was that one done? It was specifically?
You wouldn't ask me that.
Well, I got a reason.
I wasn't thinking of talking about it, okay? It's been a few years ago. Another couple of years to get the election to come back and it passed.
It was after 1987, but before 2007.
But where it is?
Twenty years.
And, and I certainly agree. I get ticked every time my ad valorem taxes go up, okay?
Yeah.
I know where you're coming from.
I'm just thinking, if you're trying to pass four mills, you're estimating that would be a budget of over a million dollars? And you currently operate on 300?
Well, now that's for the whole county.
Exactly, the whole county.
Well, you represent the whole county already.
But I mean, but Crescent is 300.
Well, that's going to be a hard sell for Guthrie people.
Well, yeah, why would I want my property taxed?
If they're paying $300,000 for an awesome library right now, why would they want to pay?
And your largest voting pool is right here in Guthrie. I mean, I just don't see this.
Seven Logan County.
I don't have numbers, but I know that Southern Logan County, South County is, we call it North Edmund, I mean, you know, that's in, within the, the county line. If those people don't shop here and pay their sales tax here, then they use our library for free, as you said. The people that live here and shop here and pay our sales tax, we do pay for our library in a way. But those in South County that come up here and use our library services, they're not paying anything for the services that we provide at the library. And it's my understanding that South County is the fastest growing area in possibly Oklahoma, is what I understood.
So do we have any kind, do we have any kind of statistics on South County on how much they're coming in or?
We can get it.
I mean, you called it North Edmund, so my, my assumption would be they're going to Edmund. They may not be going to the Edmund, I mean, I don't know if they're going to the Edmund.
Well, they have an Edmund library in the north part of town, so why wouldn't they?
Yeah, they're not coming all the way out here.
Yeah.
They have to pay.
They have to pay.
Oh, do they?
Out of county fee to go to the library there. And a lot of them do not want to pay that fee.
I can, I can speak to that because I worked both at the Guthrie Library and then I worked at the Edmund Library, so I've gotten the yakety yak on both sides of mine, both sides when I was working in each place. The metropolitan library system was charging $40 a year for an annual fee card. And when I was at Edmund, the South County, South Logan County residents would come in every single day and fuss about that $40 fee and they're now at $70. Now, I have no idea what it's going to cost them on their, on their property taxes if they choose to go with this, but I can tell you that there was a lot of fussing about the fact that they weren't represented with library services in South Logan County. And being a Logan County resident and a longtime fan of Guthrie, I would tell them, oh, but you don't know, you do have services up there. So there is definitely a push and a pull because when I worked in Guthrie and people would come in and they'd say, well, how come you don't have?
would come in and they'd say, well, how come you don't have what they have down at Metropolitan? It's like, well, because they have, you know, a system with 19 locations and ad valour taxes and they have, what is their budget, $40 million or something, you know? So I mean, that's a little hard to compete with. I, I don't, I just wanted to share that from both having worked at both places, that the customers do notice the difference and do comment about it and do come into both locations. Adrian's?
Yes, I live in Edmund and I worked at the Edmund Public Library before I came to the state. And I worked at Metropolitan, it was in the early 90s and it was $40 and they complained. And now it's $70, but living in Edmund, I was going through my taxes this year and I'm paying $70, so they're paying what we're paying. But yes, they do come because they're, they're getting, well, it's not 19, it's 25, do you have 25 branches at Metro now?
19.
19, 19 branches, so you're, you're eating a huge resources of.
Six million material.
Yes, all those materials plus the online, plus the workshops and trainings and classes that they do. And they, they complained, but they will pay and they will go to Edmund.
And I think they'll still continue to complain and continue to pay, can still go to Edmund, even if this was to pass. I don't think you're going to change the way they.
Unless you had something, unless you had something down there. Yeah.
Do you all really think that the rural people of Logan County will choose to use this system if it's implemented?
I think if it's implemented, if they've agreed to the tax, I think yes, they will. I, I can't see why they wouldn't. I could see them objecting to the tax, yes, but if they go along.
Well, see, and that's another issue that was, because I'm still back on Cheryl's question, what are our hours?
Monday through Friday, excuse me, Monday through Saturday. So Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, nine to six. Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine to eight. Saturdays, nine to one.
Okay. Because I'm still on Cheryl's deal, because that was a really good question. You're saying that they're going to have problems outside of Logan County even wanting to do this tax. And they don't currently have a library. And our, so intra-Guthrie is going to have a real problem doing the tax. I'm just playing the role of, of every other person out there, I pounded a lot of doors out there in the past and they don't want a tax. And so that's what I'm concerned about. And then we've got the other millages coming up and it's probably, that's probably even going to happen before this, so how does that look? I don't know how that looks.
It's not easy to pass a millage.
No.
I mean, I don't.
Especially on something like this that hadn't been done in 30, 40 years.
Well, it's doable, but you're right. And if you're going to have two at the same time, you're right, it is, it's hard, but it's not something that's insurmountable. But you're right, you've got to have down exactly what you're going to be giving them. And when you start doing your door to door and going out and soliciting support, they've got to know what they're going to get when they add that to their ad valour tax.
And you know, unfortunately, historically, Logan County is really hard to talk into anything that's different. They're very set in their ways, very comfortable or not paying the taxes they are. And a lot of times, it's a very difficult situation. I just, I don't see a lot of support from the rural people and you're going to have to have that to make it happen.
Well, I'm on the flip side of that. I don't see a lot of support from intra-Guthrie and South Logan County.
Maybe I'm, everybody. I'm just wondering if there'll be enough support from even.
Well, because here's what happens, I can download and watch the movie I want to right on this little device and right here, right now.
I'm just thinking, as a city resident currently, our library runs off $300,000 off our sales tax and it's a great library for us. I don't want my sales, my property tax increased by four mils.
You're not going to get any more for it.
I'm not going to get any more for it.
Actually, you might get less.
I couldn't be in favor.
I don't understand that statement.
Maybe, well, what I mean by might get less is because our resources might need to go elsewhere.
But we have $100,000.
In the interim, I know that, but in the interim, our human resources and that type thing might need to go elsewhere is what I mean. Okay, well, because let's face it, this happens, we're going to start, you're going to be somewhere else potentially trying to create a new animal.
I mean, it honestly sounds like.
But not by myself.
Not by yourself, I get that.
Again, I hope everyone sees all the support.
I get it.
It looks like you're trying to do this to support the smaller communities and not necessarily enhance support from Guthrie residents. You're trying to enhance the support to people that we have no control. This is the Guthrie City Council, not the Crescent, not the Coyle, not the Langston. I'll be honest, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't care about them. I'm here to work for the city, the Guthrie residents.
And so that's why it's, it is being asked to explore.
Chris?
So just today, I was asked by a group of people to come team up with them to visit all the schools within Guthrie. I was asked to do a program and I am your one children's librarian, reaching out to how many public schools that serve K through four, five, six? One person. That's not including all the other counties that, or the other cities that I have to reach out to individually to talk to their schools also. Your one city of Guthrie employee that serves the entire county has to reach out to those schools also. If we had another library in southern Logan County, there would be another children's librarian or two that would be able to reach out to those individuals.
See, I'll make note when it comes to that. Why is our staff reaching out extra, outside of the county to other?
Outside the city.
Outside the city.
You get state aid for your entire county. When we raised state aid from 1 million to 2 million, the, it was that anybody that wanted it for the whole county served the whole county. So your state aid, I'm not sure, what do you get through state aid? State aid is money that's appropriated by the legislature and comes straight through to public libraries.
So, but wait, what I heard is we have our staff going outside of the city, and I'm not, no harm, no foul, but going outside of the city and supporting other cities that we're paying for.
And I'm not cool with that.
I know you're.
I have a question, Councilwoman. You rightly so say you're just for the citizens of Guthrie. Perfect, totally understand that. I'm a citizen of Guthrie and I appreciate that. But if this went to a county system and it switched over to a millage, that $300,000 budget that you're currently paying for the library, what could you do with that if you had that in addition to your budget you currently have for police and fire and other things?
Well, it wouldn't go to police and fire, I can tell you that right now. We have infrastructure needs. And I'm not saying we obviously wouldn't.
To the streets, how many more streets could you fix besides the alley behind the bank?
Two years' budget.
You know, that's $300,000 of sales tax that could go somewhere else if the county is paying a millage.
Sure, absolutely. That's a good point.
And that is a good point. And the, but the devil advocate side of that is, is that we would pay more individually for that to happen when we could probably pay less to get more. One, one mil's 300 grand. So as a city, we could pass a two mil tax for streets and roads and that's 600,000. So the devil's advocate there, those numbers just don't work.
Do you think you could pass it?
No, I don't.
The citizens of Guthrie don't.
I don't think you could pass.
Unique thing to put in the equation, because there's always a certain amount of tax burden people are going to accept and vote for. We, we all realize that. And the, probably the number one factor of people moving to a city when they have children is the school district. And we have school districts all over our county competing for the ad valour property taxes and bond issues. So you go, if you put four mils on for the library and then come back and put five mils on for public safety, you're starting to compete with the school districts and their ability to pass bond issues to improve the school districts, which is kind of our lifeblood for the future if we want to keep being attractive to grow. And, and I'm not saying that negatively towards libraries, libraries are great things, but there's an equation there and what is that magic equation that works?
Well, plus the, you probably just got treasury letters from the Oklahoma County showing how your taxes did increase right across the board for the entire community. And they did.
Most of the time, when you move from a singular parochial operation to a larger expansive one, and you're spreading the cost, risk to larger groups, most of the time, the end product is better because you've got more resources. I mean, it just stands to, stands logic that you can provide more services, whether that's service to the homeless or whether that's service to the person that's across the street from the library. There's generally a more expansive service. So I could see that philosophically in this, in this opportunity to move to a countywide operation. Whether that's worth an increase in millage is a whole other, whole other topic. And I'm just, I'm looking ahead to the item that we're going to be discussing in the next hour, which is discussion and possible action to, on a request from the Public Library Board to support exploring the creation of this library system. And that's what we're going to be, actually, we're going to take a vote, that's what we're going to be taking a vote on. I'm not exactly sure what that means, exploring the creation. Does it mean that we're committing, that, that this council is supportive of a countywide library system?
No.
Okay, what, what, tell me, what does that mean? We're going to be talking in another half an hour, 45 minutes about that particular language on our agenda. What does it mean?
It means that we, meaning Oklahoma Department of Libraries, library staff, friends of the library and the library board have talked about this and we would like to talk to other spaces, other places in Logan County to see if they are interested. And we wanted the board to know, excuse me, the city council to know, this is what we would like to do, to explore. There would not be a library county.
Before this thing else happened, you come back to us again.
Exactly. Exactly.
We'd like to, you know, maybe do some informal polling or, or go and visit with the people in Crescent, in Coyle, in Langston and just see what they think about it. And, and possibly even, you know, visit with some of the people in South County and see, you know, how that would impact them as young families in all these new homes and everything. Would that be something they would be interested in, in exploring themselves, having a, an enhanced library system that they could access?
And I might point out, you all kept on about all the other cities, but you never mentioned county government, which is going to be kind of important in this process, so you might want to reach out to them as well.
To the county commissioners.
Right. But we can't do that before having a conversation with you all.
And part, part of what you said is absolutely accurate. You can close your eyes and sit here being in rural Oklahoma and envision a resource that you never had through this scenario, okay? But you can't sit here in Guthrie and close your eyes and envision a resource that you never had in this scenario because it's already there. That's where I come from.
Well, I mean, there can, even though we have the library on steroids, there can be more.
I don't know.
I don't either. The professionals can tell us that. I mean, I don't know.
I guess the library staff and the board, they see every day what the library services can, can impact, how the impact that the citizens. They see the children who come in for storytime. Some of them, you know, their faces in their mother's chest. Some of them strut around. It helps socialization. It helps them begin to learn how to read. There are a lot of parts of what libraries do that you might never see with your eyes, you just kind of have to understand that they're going on. The library is used by homeschoolers all the time. They socialize their kids there. There's just a lot of, a lot of good things that come out of that space, even if you disregard the, the resources. It's a community center. The library staff is really good at pointing people to government services that they're requesting, but they don't know how to find. They can, you know, look in the directory and say, okay, well, you might want to try that office or that office. They don't actually intervene, they simply give information and pass it on. There's an impact every day on a lot of people that the rest of us in our busy lives don't see, but it's there.
And that's also rural Guthrie as well as city limits Guthrie?
Do you mean it's whoever uses the library?
Right, but I'm, but is the majority, I'm sure the majority of it would be people that are within the Guthrie city limits or close, right?
That's what we don't know. We don't know who our users.
Right, that's, and I think that's, I think that's important.
I think that would be part of the exploration. With, with your, with your blessing, so to speak, we would begin to get those numbers and accumulate those totals that you've, some of the things that you all have asked about. But until we have the blessing of the city council, who is currently over the current library, we did not want to start reaching out and expending resources to try to get those numbers for you.
So when you say expending resources, I hear spending money. How much money are we spending?
I, I don't think it's that. I think it's just a matter of, you know, putting together the ways that we would find out if the other people are interested and if they're using the library services and if so, what and when. I'm on the library board and I have a hard time making it to the library because of the hours. You know, if I work 30 minutes late at work and then I try to get to the library to do something, I've got, I've only got 30 minutes on the nights they stay open late. You know, and so to me, even just if we could increase the hours, would be a blessing for me to be able to, to spend more time at the library. And I think that it would probably also be a blessing to a lot of other people who live in Guthrie, work outside of Guthrie, have to drive home and they'd like to take their kid to the library or participate in one of the programs that happen during the weekdays because of our library hours, but they can't. I have eight grandkids. Six of them live in this town. And I would love to take the older ones to some of the library programs, but I can't because they happen at 9:00 AM on a weekday. If they happen on a Saturday, I'd be there with as many of them as I could hold.
So you're asking for our approval, if you will, to go and continue this dialogue with others, other cities as well as in rural?
Steve, there's, there's, there's no obligation on the part of the city council. There is no money expected of you, there is nothing expected of you, except just to say, go ahead and see what is out there. We're not going to spend any of your money. I mean, it's, it's not that point. It may take us months to gather this information. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. And we want the city council to realize that we're not coming to you asking for money.
And just to clarify, I don't think there would be a cost to the city. The friends of the library are not paid and the board members are not paid. So any time we spend, that would just be our time as volunteers.
And we appreciate those volunteer hours and support.
So on the other, on the other deal, on the EMS thing you were talking about, if in the event the legislature passes that, which is going to happen pretty quick, I think, who, my question is, who on city staff or who within Guthrie is going to be going door to door on that millage? Because I don't want multiple people hitting my door asking for increased property tax because none of it's going to happen at that point.
The public safety district is, is the term for this. It's not EMS.
Okay, well, public safety because it's police and fire. I'm sorry, EMS is already there, it's already done.
If that passes, it probably would go into effect in November of this year. And so next spring would be the opportunity, if we wanted to propose a public safety district, it would be a city election, not countywide, because any property tax that we levy, the public safety district would be limited to property inside the city. public safety district would be limited to property inside the city limits. But it would be city staff that would work that and distribute, not trying to get people to vote yes, but distribute information.
Right, just like on this deal. But no, on the library deal, will city staff be working that as well?
If we decide to pursue it and the city council is supportive, then yes, we would probably, along with the friends of the library and the library board, we would have staff time involved. Now, we would not be using.
No, I'm talking about in this, I'm talking about in the discovery phase. You hitting the doors, asking people if they're, if they're wanting?
I would assume that we would have limited staff time in the exploration states because we already are overlooked as far as staff time. Our library director may have some time to go to some meetings, but as far as go door-to-door, and at most, that would probably weigh on the library board and the friends of the library.
Absolutely, we're up for it.
Got four minutes. John, come in, see if you have any questions?
I'm listening and learning.
Okay, nothing? Jeff?
There's my questions.
Okay.
James?
He said I talked enough.
Yeah, we're quarantining you.
Okay. First of all, I wanna, from a personal standpoint as well as from city standpoint, express great appreciation for the friends of the library, the volunteers that are involved in your operation every single day to, to make it a special place, I think, for the citizens of Guthrie as obviously the staff that, that are, again, spark plugs to, to make, make it happen. You do a phenomenal job and, and I, I appreciate it. And, and thanks for the visitors from outside of our community, the VIPs and experts for coming and sharing your information with us. I suspect you may be coming back to talk to us after these next three or four steps get made. And we'll have another opportunity to, to get a little bit more into the, what you found out and some of the data, the specifics that you've, that you've found. And again, we'll be discussing this and the city council meeting over the next hour with, with that item eight on the agenda. Anybody else wanna?
No, I wanna thank everybody for coming too because most of you had to drive. And I'm not against this proposal. I'm a devil's advocate, I guess, because you're gonna have a lot of negative comments and I wanted that addressed.
Okay, last comments from friends?
No.
No, we're good.
Okay, Suzette, you wanna make a final statement?
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. We are in.